We don't want to record.
There should be a pause right up here.
All right. I'm calling this meeting to order. This is our Liberty City Council regular session, December 12th, 2020. It's actually 6:32 PM at the Rosewood Center. Welcome, everybody. It's good to see everybody here. And we will get started. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Massey if you will give our invocation for us, please.
Dear Lord, we come to you tonight with an open mind and an open heart, Lord. I want to pray for the council and pray for those who are in attendance tonight. Lord, I just pray that we can form a group together and make things happen for the best of the town. And I pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. If you'll please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, I'll go into my announcements. All right, first, I'd just like to say thank you to those that participated in our Christmas events. This was the second for this council, our Christmas event. So, a big shout out, thank you to Deborah Grabiel for heading those up. And Deborah's family, for Daniel, their children, they did, they put a lot of work into that. And it was well done. And I enjoyed myself. We had the Christmas parade, the Christmas tree lighting, and it was a nice, small-town feel. And thank you to everybody that participated in that. Also, I wanted to let everybody know that we just, December 1st was one-year anniversary of mine and Robbie swearing in as mayor and council. And then, just a week later, Daniel. So, we just celebrated a year in that. So, we're very grateful, I'm very grateful to be able to continue to serve the city of Liberty in this capacity. And just continue, prayers I ask from everybody as I continue and as this council continues to move forward and moving Liberty forward and doing great things for this city. And now, speaking of the parade, we wanted to make an announcement. We had not announced our winners for the Holly Jolly Christmas Parade. And I think we've got two groups here with us tonight. So, I'm going to announce the winners, and we've got trophies over here. First place was Aim Dance Studio. Got three peoples here that is going to be accepting that. And second place, not here, but I will announce, was EXP Realty. That was Jody Cartier. And third place, we have Trail Light USA Truth, South Carolina, 2244.
Boys, come on up.
This year was actually our most registered, we had the most registered for the parade. What, fifty-one or fifty-two entries? Fifty-five entries. So, I just planned to grow some more next year. So, thank you again, and congratulations to all of our winners. All right, and at this time, we have a presentation. We've got Shulay Young, who wants to present the Golden Rule. Thank you. Ms. Young, if you will take that, and there's a button on the right back there. That's the need button, that should unneed it.
Thanks for setting aside a special time to allow me to present this. I'm very happy to be here. The Bahamas of Pickens County would like to present Mayor Woods and City Council members a framed artwork of the Golden Rule in honor of the hundredth-year anniversary of the passing of Abdul Baha. Abdul Baha is the son of the founder of the Bahai faith of Allah. And Bahais all around the world commemorated his centenary passing a year ago on November 27th. And because he's a very special figure in the Bahai faith, our local community wanted to give this to our leaders and to share just a little bit about him, hopefully as an inspiration as you serve. In 1912, at the age of 68, Abdul Baha journeyed from Israel to visit the United States. He loved our country because of its uniqueness and composition, and praised our diversity of cultures and peoples. Abdul Baha traveled across the United States, visiting many cities, including New York, Chicago, and San Francisco. While in these cities, he spoke at churches and homes and at universities, sharing the teachings of Baha'u'llah to tens of thousands of people from many different backgrounds, both wealthy and poor, black and white. His talks and messages exemplify that there is one Creator of humankind, that all religions are from one God, and that we should all live in unity. The first two sentences of his talk at the All Souls Unitarian Church in New York on July 14th, 1912, convey his message of love and unity. His words are still applicable to the current conditions of the world. And this is quote, "Today, I wish to speak to you on the subject of the oneness of humanity. For in this great century, the most important accomplishment is the unity of mankind. Although in former centuries and times, this subject received some measure and consideration, it has now become the paramount issue and question in the religious and political conditions of the world," end quote. "We as a civilization must cure the prejudices that cause this unity. Our children deserve an inheritance, one of security, of peace, of love, and unity. Please accept our gifts of this framed Golden Rule artwork and Oneness of Humanity multicolored pen ribbon that I have in the envelope here. We hope they will offer a constant reminder as you serve our community, a message taught by all religions of the world, instructing us to show forth kindliness, compassion, and respect towards one another as we ourselves wish to be treated." And finally, in commemoration of Abdul Baha's life of service, we invite you to watch this video that was commissioned for his centenary passing called "The Exemplar", which follows his life and the profound effect he had on people, both past and present. And the video is online at thehigh.org/Exemplar. And I have that also in the letter here, if you would like to watch that. And thank you very much for having me, and I wish everybody a very happy holiday. Thank you very, it's a perfect time to get this gift, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Young. We appreciate it. All right, and next up is our public session. Do we have any speakers tonight? Okay, no speakers signed up for tonight. So, at this time, I'm not sure if some of you, I think some of you said you might need to depart, so this is a good time to do that. Thank you so much for being here again. Congratulations. All right, so we will move on to the approval of minutes for the November 14th, 2022 session. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Grabiel. Do I have a first, I mean, a second? Sorry. Okay, I have a second by Councilmember Massey. Do I have any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving minutes for November 14th, 2022, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
And that was unanimous. Okay, now to our unfinished business, which is our second readings. Our first second reading is of ordinance 2022-19, which is the Fire Service Agreement. Mr. Calvert, please give us a little summary.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right, good. Just want to make sure. The fire service ordinance is an ordinance, obviously, that we are required to have in order to obtain fire service from the county fire department. So, it's just an agreement between us and them to obtain fire service. And am I off in anyway? No, we're good. Sum that up very, okay?
There's your hiring board.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. But yeah, it's basically a standard fire service agreement for us to obtain that service from the county fire department.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 2022-19, the Fire Service Agreement?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Shuen Leyden. Do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay, I'm going to hear Rhonda first, okay? Okay, all right, and then a second by Councilmember Whitaker. Do I have any discussion, any questions? So, get me is here to help with any questions that anybody may have. All right, all those in favor of approving the second reading of ordinance 2022-19, Fire Service Agreement, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that was unanimous. Thank you. And moving on to the second reading of 2022-20, the rezoning of 125 Scout Circle. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Shuen Leyden. Do I have a second?
I'll say a second motion.
Okay, and I've got a second by Councilmember Paget. Do I have any discussion? All right.
I'll just add on that after some of the conversation internally last week, I did talk to one of the property owners who was in the process of selling that property. They found a couple of issues with it that they're working with the city on in terms of recognizing the road. Apparently, Scout Circle was not fully recognized. I don't know how it's been there that long, but it hasn't been. They're working on that right now, and she said barring that, she had no problem with moving forward with it being his own. So, and I think it was basically the same from the bowling.
The bowling, really, yes.
The two that are stuck in between the two properties are perfectly fine with it at this point.
All right. All right, well, I've got a motion, I've got a second. We've had our discussion, so all those in favor of the second reading of ordinance 2022-20, rezoning of 125 Scout Circle, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that was unanimous. Okay, we've got our second reading of ordinance 2022-21, the rezoning of 2019 North Palmetto Street. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Grabiel. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I've got a second by Councilmember Whitaker. Do I have any discussion? All right, then all those in favor of approving the second reading of ordinance 2022-21, rezoning of 219 North Palmetto Street, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
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 All right, that was unanimous. All right, second reading. Thank you. All right, the second reading of ordinance 2022-22, amending Article II, Section II. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Massey. Do I have a second?
I have second.
Okay, I've got a second by Councilmember Paget. And I'll ask, Mr. Calvert, please just sum that up real quick.
This is to bring in line the ordinance regarding the strong air form of government. Though we are following the law, we felt it would be much clearer to have, make sure that was in our ordinances for the public to see. And what this does is it clarifies the responsibilities and authorities of the mayor, as well as the process of being able to speak during a council session. Nothing's really changed there. It's in the existing ordinance, but we changed the time from, I believe, 5 o'clock to 4:30. That's the only change, was that half hour difference. So, that stays pretty much exactly the same otherwise. But it does clarify the responsibilities and authorities of the mayor, which currently do not exist anywhere in the ordinance. And that's why we need to put it in there.
All right. Do we have any questions or discussion on that? Okay, well, then, all those in favor.
I was, this is just, again, might just be clerical thing, but one of the things listed in the order that I noticed, and I forgot about it from the start, it actually lists that we're supposed to have committee reports before we have unfinished business. They always do that at the end. Does that need to be changed to reflect, since this is the dictated order of our meetings? It's right here, report of committees. Would that be departments and things of that nature? We wouldn't even use that at the end of that.
Yeah, we can change, yeah.
That's the only thing.
Yeah.
Again, just a clerical type thing, but figure if we're making an amendment, we can do that.
Okay.
I'll look one.
All right, well, then, all those in favor of the second reading of ordinance 2022-22, amending Article II, Section II, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. And the last second reading, ordinance 2022-23, amending Article III, Section III, Mr. Calvert.
This basically amends my section in the ordinance, giving certain roles and responsibilities. This clarifies them and puts them in line with a strong air form of government. Originally, it said that the administrator was the chief executive officer, but as we all know, the mayor in this form of government is the chief executive officer. My role is chief administrative officer, and this essentially changes that to chief administrative officer and clarifies the roles and responsibilities.
Okay, all right, so, hearing that, do I have a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 2022-23?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Grabiel. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, and I have a second by Councilmember Shuen Leyden. Any discussion? Okay, all right, then, all those in favor of approving the second reading of ordinance 2022-23, amending Article III, Section III, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Thank you. All right, we have no new business. We're going to move on to our department head reports.
First is the insult. Good evening, mayor, council, administrator, members of the public.
Good evening.
Yeah, everybody. In November, we issued 108 warnings and 90 citations and a rest of total of nine. Some of those were resisting arrest, harassment, several for domestic violence, burglary first, and one for apparently they were possessing urine for the wrong reasons. That's a weird one. Takes all types. We got through the Veterans Parade, the Christmas Parade, and tree lighting, and all those events, and it seemed like everything was successful. So, we're happy to get through all of that and start a new year coming up soon. We did graduate two new police officers this past Friday. I know that's technically in December, but I'll tell you about it anyway. And then, hopefully, January 6th, our last two or other two will graduate. Get them moving on their field training, and you'll start seeing those people out there with people, with current officers, training for the next couple of months. We've got hopefully a bright future in front of us. That's all I have.
Very good. Well, thank you, and thank you for all that you have done. I know that's a lot of work, but I heard a lot of good feedback, and I was so proud. I heard a lot of good feedback on, about our police department and how you handled the traffic, especially during the parade, which was one of the biggest traffic ordeals there, but great job. Thank you.
Thank you. That's, it's no small feat. I mean, we do shut down the whole town.
Yes.
You want to get to Norris, you have to know how to get to Norris. It's on that line, so, it's a task, but thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, in our public works, you've got your public works. I won't, I won't take the time to read that. You've got that in front of you as far as the tonnage and all that that they've picked up. And the rec department, I will read that. Basketball just got underway with their practices, and Liberty will be representing nine boys teams, three girls teams, and three co-ed teams. We just got all-new netting installed with the Pickens County grant money at the Little League Baseball Field, so that's, that's good. The Mills Gym is back with the rec and just received a fresh paint job on the inside and is back to being used for practices. We are still waiting for the new floor to be installed. So, lots of good things happening and improvements going on at the rec center. And so, we're very appreciative to Austin Lynch, our rec director, and his staff as well for keeping things going there for our, for our kids in the community and that their families can come out and enjoy watching them have a good time and learning team sports. And next is the building officials, and you've got that as well, so I'll just let you show that. Next, we've got our city administrator reports. Mr. Calvert.
First, and it's not on here, so I want to bring that up now, is that we do have a new, what we are calling Director of Community Development. He's a building official, that's Mr. Philip Trotter. He, I feel like we were very lucky to get his services. He used to be the city administrator for Pickens, as well as a building official for the county of Pickens. So, with us trying to develop our community development department to be the best it can be with growing the city's businesses and then getting the right type of building official in here, we're very lucky to have him. So, I just want to make sure that he should be coming in future meetings to give a building official's report, hopefully personally. So, that's one thing. Also, I want to point out, I do apologize if these aren't in the packets, but, you know, I want to give you the last-minute information, anything that's up to the very last minute. If I give this to you, it's from a week ago, and things happened right up to today. So, I want to make sure you're getting the very last minute of information. So, that's why I give you these at the council meetings, but if you don't prefer it that way, let me know. I can definitely make sure they're in the packet if you prefer to have those. I just try to make sure you get the last-minute information. With the administrator's report, I'm going to talk about some things that were part of the strategic plan that you've given to me to try to enact as many things on there as possible. The first thing on here is the strategic plan, dynamic community, cultivate community development engagement, and developing strategy for the redevelopment of the Rosewood Center. In that, we had a company begin repairing the facial on Rosewood, as well as the addition of gutters, but I wanted to make sure that I told you that the next product will be a study on repairs of certain ceiling areas that we've known. Now that the ceiling is better, to look at those and see if we can go about repairing some ceiling areas to make sure that it's, you know, up to where it needs to be standard-wise for us to move forward with the Rosewood Center. The next strategic plan item is the economic development, promote local and regional tourism, specifically designed tourism spaces utilizing the historic downtown. As you could probably see, the roof is in the process of being repaired, I would say replaced, down at the stage in the Plaza area downtown. So, that's begun right now. It'll be a metal roof. It will not be shingles. That way, it will last for an indefinite amount of time. It's definitely like it reached around 25 to 30 years. Let's hope for that. So, that's coming. After that, there'll be railings, and then we'll have tables and chairs, very similar to the ones in these. It'll be very heavy, so they're not easily walked off with. But that's what we're looking to do to help enact that part of the strategic plan that you, that you gave me. The next strategic plan item is dynamic community, cultivate community development engagement, developing strategy, and implementation of a city municipal complex. As everyone knows, the city was, has purchased attractive land off of 178. It's the parking lot between Dollar General and the church there. The purpose of the purchase is for a new municipal complex to include city hall and police services. The funds used for the purchase came from the ARPA allocation, and no direct cost for our citizens. This will be an ongoing effort of the city and Liberty citizens that will take approximately three to four years to complete. The next step will be to hire a company to complete an architectural analysis. This analysis will include a city growth study to recommend the required square footage. This study will basically be about a 25-year study to see what growth pattern we have, what population they expect us to have at that point, so that we have the square footage that could handle that type of growth with city services. And that analysis will also be with ARPA allocation, and again, will have no direct cost to our citizens. And the last strategic plan item I have on here is resilient infrastructure, enhance trust and reliability, and provide tools for customers to better understand utility usage. I'm really happy about this. We are currently creating a graphic that explains each item on the monthly utility bill. We expect to have this graphic out on our website in January. We expect to have this graphic out on our website in January. Our hope is that this is a step to assist understanding utility usage. Um, each item there will have a, a letter of number, something like that on it, and it will explain what that utility, uh, cost, uh, is about, whether or not it's something that comes from the city or the city, or it gets that from, from an outside source. It will basically let them know everything that's happening with that utility bill. I find that's, uh, something that might not be that difficult to do, but it's pretty exciting because I think it's a very powerful document, uh, to educate, uh, our citizens as well as customers of our utilities. Uh, the city of Liberty continues to bring interest as well as doing, uh, a, as we have a new annexation agreement that will be brought for the council in the January council meeting. Uh, this property is located up next to the airport, so we do have people that are always interested in, in joining, uh, the, the Liberty, uh, community, uh, in proper. City Hall has had multiple severe, uh, water leaks develop. I know much of the council's aware of that. Uh, I intend to look at asking roofers, uh, the feasibility of mitigating future leaks and their current effects to the interior of the building. Mainly I'm gonna look to see, cost-wise, if we can patch, uh, some areas of the roof to, to minimize the leaking. I don't know if we can stop it completely. It's just at a, at a point now where it's, uh, it's gonna be difficult, but I am gonna look to see what we can do to minimize that because it is definitely having an effect, uh, on the interior of the building. Uh, let me see, the city is moving the responsibilities obtained from bringing the landscaping contract into direct city responsibility from Public Works to Parks and Recreation. What this is, is we had a landscaping contract, uh, with a company we thought was best to bring it in-house. Uh, when we first brought it in-house, we put it with Public, uh, Works, but we felt that looking at the areas that are being handled with this, uh, with this money was more appropriate to put it into, uh, Parks and Recreation, so that those funds and that responsibility transferred to, to Parks and Recreation. Um, let me see, and the budget of that will be also transferred from Public Works to Parks and Recreation as well, so that will go with it. Um, and the last thing is there has been some confusion, uh, by the public regarding alcohol sales during the, uh, Christmas parade. Um, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, the city, uh, did not sell any alcohol during the Christmas parade. Uh, I know there were confusion because it happened during the parade, but it was done by the Performing Arts Center and, uh, they were responsible for all sales of alcohol. We are looking into it for certain, certain areas of their responsibility, but it was not the city that, that sold alcohol, so any of the public complain about that, just make sure to let them know was not the city at, at any capacity. I know they, there's been some commentary out there that's confused that, but we, we have not sold any alcohol during, uh, the parade. Uh, the next thing I have is the financial report, and usually I keep this one kind of short, but it's gonna be a little bit longer today. Sorry. You guys had a shorter regular meeting, so I figured I had extra time to, to do this. Um, but yeah, I'm pleased to say the city's budget is generally where it should be, uh, and what I would expect it to be at this point. Uh, there are some areas, uh, that we have exceeded their budget amounts. Um, that's true, but with the economy inflation where it is, I feel we have been pretty diligent to keep our costs low. Um, with no additional revenue to counter this, we must remain diligent for the foreseeable future. Our citizens' hard-earned dollars deserve our care. Um, the administration, right now, we should be at about, uh, fifty-five point eight percent. That's twenty-three weeks out of fifty-two. Uh, so we should have, if we follow that on a, on a consistent curve, which isn't always the case, not everything is spent like that, but if we follow that, uh, we should be at about fifty-five point eight percent within our budgets. Uh, each department, uh, here is analyzed, and if you look, administration's at fifty-five point four five, so it's pretty much right where it needs to be. Police is at sixty-two point two six, which is excellent. Public Works is at fifteen point eight eight, but of course that'll be explained in, in a minute. And, uh, Parks and Rec is at forty-three point eight five, and that will also be explained, uh, here shortly. Um, administration, uh, while the budget looks to be right where it should be at this point, there are some items of note. Uh, though they have, uh, been mentioned in previous reports, it's worth mentioning again, the cost of a special election in addition to travel and training have added to the budget in an unexpected way. Much of the travel and training will be reimbursed by the EPA to the budget, uh, situation, so you'll see that go up, uh, within, uh, even administration. Uh, we'll be actually better than fifty-five point four five because, uh, the EPA is a reimbursed grant, and we, so we don't have the money right away, so there'll be times where you will see something like this um, within the budget, but it is reimbursed and I'll definitely make sure you're aware of that. Uh, the police department has been ahead of the budget as well. Only maintenance of vehicles and uniforms for existing new officers stands out, so there's not a whole lot of, uh, of concern there right now, especially if being at, uh, you know, it's sixty-two point two six percent. Public Works, um, that one can be a little bit confusing to look at, but it's not as low as the fifteen point eight eight suggests. The reasoning for the miscellaneous amount is the commercial trash service. We started the commercial trash service after this budget was originally enacted. There is no line item for that. Um, so we have to put it under miscellaneous, so it looks like we're like negative eighty thousand dollars, give or take, and as long as we're not. Uh, it is the commercial trash service which will be integrated with the other areas of, uh, of the Public Works budget, so it should integrate uh, evenly into that. But the other item, uh, but if you, uh, but if you look at, let me see, uh, the capital outlay, there's another section in Public Works that's called capital outlay. That's the one that really puts us at fifteen point eight eight percent. The capital outlay is really, it really shouldn't be in there, but I guess there's really not anywhere else to put it. It's a debt, uh, payment. It has really nothing to do with the budgets of Public Works, but it's a Public Works debt, so they put it in there. Um, but it's being paid for through, uh, other means, not through the budget, and that's about two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. You add that two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars back into the Public Works budget because it really shouldn't be approved in the first place, and, uh, Public Works is at fifty-six point one percent, which is about where we would expect them to be, so I feel very, very good about that, and that's something that, again, if you look at the budget and you see something like that, always look out for something that says capital outlay because that's technically not part of the budget, um, directly. It is a separate item. And then we've got, uh, Parks and Recreation, uh, two areas of expense that are affecting the budget there, and again, they are at forty-three point, I believe, eight-five percent. Um, are the new gym flooring in Rosewood projects. Uh, the new gym flooring is, uh, we've started with, we've got flooring to put down at the, the gym down there, where the tennis courts are.
Mills Avenue?
Mills Avenue. The Mills Avenue Gym, we're putting new flooring down. That will be reimbursed once we, uh, receive the money. Uh, we are receiving the funds, uh, to cover that flooring incomplete, uh, from the state. It just hasn't, uh, arrived yet, so this is something that will be reimbursed and will not affect that budget. And the other one is, uh, uh, Rosewood. Uh, part of what we decided to put Rosewood under is, uh, Parks and Rec because this is considered a Parks and Rec building and the doing some of the projects, we're doing the roofing, the fascia, um, the gutters, uh, some of that had to go under Public Works, so that's one of the things that lowered it a bit, but, uh, putting those, uh, and looking at those, um, it, it does put Parks and Rec, especially the fifty thousand dollars, which right now I think is eighteen. You put that back in the budget, it puts it right about where it needs to be as well. If you look here, um, it, uh, with those items considered, uh, Parks and Recs currently stands at fifty-two point two three. A little low, but nothing to really concern ourselves over at this point. Again, remember, everything's costing twice as much and we do not have, uh, revenue, additional revenue to cover that, so we're just, again, trying to be as diligent as we can with the, the citizens, uh, their citizens' funds, and I feel pretty good about where we are right now, considering that. Um, one thing of note, the city will be changing, uh, the financial software. That's nothing for you to worry about, but I figured it's something to point out because this new software should make it so that one, we can have separate, uh, bank accounts. Um, right now we have one bank account, and this basically shows us what everything is, but it is basically one big pot of gold, and we've got to figure out what's what from here. Um, it's always been a good practice, and what I agree with is to have different accounts for different reasons, for different things. Uh, for instance, um, a, an interest-bearing account, once we have our year end and we know what, uh, money we have that we can put into, uh, an interest-bearing account, the city can actually make money off of, uh, additional funds once we're done with our, our calendar year, so, um, or I mean, our budget year. So these are items we're looking at, but one of the things of note is this new software, while I still feel it's better for what our, um, City Hall needs than what we have right now, it is actually twenty-five thousand dollars a year less than what we currently have, so we're gonna get a better product, and it's gonna cost us about twenty-five thousand dollars a year less. Um, so I'm really excited about that. Just wanted to bring that a note with this, that we are always looking for ways to, to try to save money uh, for, for the citizens and the taxpayers, uh, of our community, so wanted to bring that up as well. Um, that was a lot, so if there's any questions at all, um, I'm here for you.
All right, thank you, Michael. Does anybody have any questions? All right, thank you. Appreciate you keeping us informed of all that. All right, next, we are moving on to our city council reports. Council member Shuen Laban, do you have anything? Okay, thank you. Council member Graybeal?
Nothing to report.
All right, council member Whittaker?
Nothing to report.
Okay, council member Massey?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, council member Powell?
Just wanted to say that there are a lot of, a lot of positive compliments about the Christmas parade. Thanks to everyone who did so much hard work to make that happen.
Okay, thank you. And council member Paget?
Well, I, I don't have anything to report, but I do have some questions, if it's okay. Y'all all here for such a glass. Uh, Michael touched on, uh, it about four and hours alcohol sales. How did they get a permit to have that on the same day? Do you have any idea?
Well, I, I guess it's a two-part answer. I mean, that's, do you, would they have to have a permit from the city to have that event going on from City Hall? And then would they have to have a special event alcohol permit also, which they did not have? So I'm the one that has to sign that.
Yeah.
And they didn't have that?
They did not.
What? No, I, I just wanted to, what, what was the confusion now that happened? And so try and not let it happen again.
Well, uh, there again, I think that's a two-part. I think, um, I, I told the mayor about this, is that they bring the, uh, Mills on Wheels, when they have an event, they serve alcohol. They bring me a special event application that they have to do for the Department of Revenue and submit the sled. Um, they bring it to me to, to pretty much say, I have no objection on a public safety issue. I have no public safety issue with them having an event. I don't allow them to have an event. I, I don't say it's okay on this day or that day or something else is going on. That's outside of my, um, scope. So, on the, if they had come to see me a month before, I would have signed it because it doesn't, I, I'm not the one to say you can't have it on the same day as the Christmas parade. Now, if, uh, someone is, uh, gonna have an event like that, I think they need to speak with City Hall about having that event. But, uh, does that make sense?
Well, they have to get their permit from the alcohol, say alcohol.
They have to get it from the Department of Revenue. Like I said, they, they'll bring it to me. I'll look at what it is, what they plan. And from a public safety issue side of it, I'd say, well, I don't have any objections to that happening.
But that, that, that never happened, so that's where there's this confusion. It just, it was just done, so that's where the confusion.
Were they aware of that, that they had to do that, or was it just something they?
I'm sure the person who is selling the alcohol was aware of it.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we're gonna have some talks about it. But like I said, I think there needs to be communication from City Hall with the people who are putting that event on from the PAC Center to, uh, avoid something that might clash. On the other side, on the non-law enforcement side of it.
The other question is, because it's on their property, is there anything currently where they have to fill out? I mean, would there be any reason for them to get a permit from the city since it is on their property?
Uh, yes, I would, um, being city limits, they would still have to get a permit, like for instance, the, the, the beer truck would, uh, be required to get a permit, uh, because it's considered essentially a food truck.
And a food truck was there as well.
Permit. The problem is, is I, I believe in our, uh, ordinance, uh, the food truck cannot sell alcohol. So in that essence, they would not have been given, uh, a permit, uh, so that's where the, you have transgressed with what he would say, which is, he wouldn't say no because they are falling within due on his end, but on the permit end, they didn't come and, and, uh, get a permit. And if they did, they wouldn't have been allowed to have one just because it's, uh, it's alcoholic.
If, if they weren't selling alcohol or food by a food truck, would they still have to have a permit from the city with it being on their property?
To have the actual event?
The actual event during the parade?
Uh, it would depend on the, the type of event. I mean, if they're just having some people come over, it wouldn't be much different than like a yard sale or some, you know, it wouldn't be any different. But once you start bringing in a, a food truck, especially something with alcohol, it, it changes the, the meaning completely. Um, again, this is a county, got county-owned, uh, location, so I am in communications, uh, with the county about this issue. Uh, so it won't, won't happen again. Again, I don't see us having, um, that type of, um, food truck alcoholic sales type situation in the future. If the, uh, the PAC wants to sell alcohol, we would probably recommend that they did it inside the PAC uh, and not have a food truck, but, uh, again, that's, uh, something we're gonna be talking more with the county about, but, but that's kind of what's happened on our end. I wanted to make sure you had the, the one end, the law enforcement end, but on the county end, yeah, they did not um, ask for a permit or anyone. And then like the chief was saying, I'm pretty sure that, uh, anybody that has one of those for a living knows that they are required to have one of those.
I, I did check just to make sure that they didn't get it signed by another, the sheriff. He usually doesn't do that. He leads that to the individual cities, but I did check with, um, a sled contact I have, and they, no one had a permit for that address for that day. Um, but I, on, on the city end, I would think there's probably a business license issue where a business could have come in, even on private property to sell, to open up shop, so I think there's several different issues there.
Yeah, the business license is actually, that's completely true, but like if the PAC wanted to just kind of do something on their own, then it probably wouldn't, but it's, yes, as soon as they're bringing in other businesses.
Right, it's like Mills on Wheels.
Yes, sir.
When they have an event to sell alcohol, they have to get it.
Exactly.
They're doing it inside and.
Exactly, yes.
So if the issue basically alcohol sales, they can't, uh, do it, we're doing it sort of inside without a permit, but they have to have a permit to serve outside.
Now, you, you either have to have a permanent liquor license, like all the alcohol sales license, or a special event permit. That's why, uh, Mills on Wheels, they don't have a permanent liquor, alcohol license. So every event they have that they plan to serve, they come see me.
But my, my issue was not them having alcohol sales.
And there may be events in the city that, that's appropriate to have alcohol sales, but not one of our big family, family-focused events. That, that was a big sticking point for a lot of people.
So we actually, I did deny them those labels. I guess no reason or any reason, if we deny.
Well, that would be up to the city. I would have to look at it as a public safety issue. Is it, if they follow all the rules that the state sets, is that a public safety issue? I'm, I'm not sure it is because the city has had at least one event where alcohol sales were at, that brought people to town, so I'm not sure if, if on my end, I would have denied it as a public safety issue, but I think the city on, could have had a conversation with, with whoever put that on.
Well, just remember though, it was gated. I mean, they, they, um, exactly, it was gated, so they were, you were supposed to stay in a specific gated-off area with alcohol. You were not supposed to walk around the city. exactly, it was gated, so they were, you were supposed to stay in a specific gated-off area with alcohol. You were not supposed to walk around the city with an open container, because again, that's another issue that would be be brought to the forefront if they were selling it and letting people just walk off with that alcohol. It is gated in, and that's something that we've had in the past where it it helps with the public safety issue.
Yeah, that's part of, that's part of the ordinance as far as.
Exactly, but again, but on our end, yes, I mean, we 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 can decide whether or not we find a certain events appropriate to have or not have, but but the chief doesn't have that that ability. He's going to look at it as a, is, with the specific thing that's brought to him, he's going to look at is, is this a public safety issue? If it's not, then he can't just say, well, it might not be a public safety issue, but I'm going to deny it anyway. He has to follow whether or not that is, that's the case and go by that. But there are two different issues there. There's that issue and ours, so we can do that.
Would it be possible for you to contact the county, whoever?
That's, that's what he's
Yes, sir, I'm working on that. Yes, sir. Yeah, I mean, as far as I've found so far, but I haven't, I I've left some message with Mr. Roper. But it doesn't look like it it came from any any area that was higher beyond the PAC. As far as I've found so far, it doesn't look like any, any directors or anybody of of any high responsibility or department there gave them the okay to do it, at least not in writing that I'm familiar with, so. I'm still looking at that. I do intend to talk to Mr. Roper about it, see what he knows and just let him be aware that, you know, that this happened, and that also, I also like to communicate with him if my staff have intend to speak with any of their staff. Like if the chief wants to investigate this further and intends to talk to some county staff members, I'd like the the county administrator to know about that ahead of time. So I'm communicating with them about that as well, that potential situation, but we are communicating.
Thank you.
I guess it's just one of those.
Yes, it was. I mean, when it was first brought to my attention, the first thing I thought of was that they were talking about Harvest and Hops. Hops and Harvest, H and H, whichever, whatever. But they're the only one that I knew of that actually had sold alcohol in that area, but then I found it out very quickly that that was not.
Evidently, they just didn't understand that they needed to go through this whole permit process.
They felt they apparently, that they could just pop it open and then do what they needed to do, and that does not happen again. At least do the best we can to make sure that doesn't happen again.
And Donna did say with Hops and Harvest that she was very careful with the people that were coming in that night to make sure they knew that they could not take it out of the building because they're not allowed to sell outside of their property, you know, because we talked to her the next day about how they, how it went, and she said they did really well, but, you know, they they made sure everybody stayed inside with it.
Well, you know, yeah. Anyway, thank y'all.
Okay.
I I'm sure y'all have been hearing about a handicapped swing or I look, what, do about six hundred dollars? Why, why would it look like that?
I I can talk a little bit of this. I did specialty for years, and it's more than just the swing. The problem is right now that the, even if we put the swing in, you wouldn't be able to get a wheelchair to the swing.
Right.
Because of the way that the playground is set up, the way it was initially designed, it's not, there's no sidewalk up through the swing. So unless they have a wheelchair that has some kind of altering wheels on it, they wouldn't be able to get to the location of the swing as it stands anyway, and we found that out, kind of reviewing, looking at how are we going to hang it, what would it look like, what would, yeah, we could buy the swing, but unless somebody either carries the individual to it or they have some kind of wheelchair that could get there through the the mulch, the bark mulch that's laid, it it still wouldn't address the accessibility of of that particular item. There there's a few issues that came up as we were looking at that.
It's not exactly in there spelled out, but that is part of it. When we're looking at our parks and our playgrounds and all that, that is something that is going to, you know, with our ADA compliance, when we're working toward an ADA compliance committee. So those kinds of things. So it's one of those things that we don't want to just do it. We need to make sure that we have a plan in place for that, and so it's definitely on the list, but just how and when that happens, you know, we're working toward that as a, as a whole for our parks and
Okay, I didn't know.
Yeah.
I've seen several things about it.
Yeah, if it was just the issue of the swing being there, it would be an easy fix, but just from having worked with people in wheelchairs for most of my professional career investigation, it still would not be easily accessible, even if we put the swing in at this point. But that revisiting and redesigning of the parks is something that we talked about.
Well, we speak of parks in the city. We're just talking about the one beside the gym on Mills Avenue and the one in Freedom Park, correct?
And Sarlin Park and, you know, so all, yeah.
But that's not really a playground park. Sarlin's not, right?
No.
Not at this point.
But the
The county is still responsible for the one at the airport.
Yes.
Yeah. And when we talked about the revisiting, I think it included Sarlin, it included the walkways, you know, how reconnecting all of the different Parks and Rec areas. I mean, all of that was kind of part of that conversation, so making progress, but it's going to take a while.
Yes, okay, so we just, I think we're getting a little off track here. We need to rate it because we're starting to sound like we're having a work session, so we want to, yeah, okay, so, so, yeah, this we're going to move on from that. And then we're going into, right now, we're going to go into a motion to enter executive session pertaining to section thirty dash four dash seventy A one. It's discussion of employment. This is what it falls under, discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline or release of an employee, a student or a person regulated by a public body. This is a personnel matter, and it's regarding Public Works Department and the Recreation Department. So do I have a motion to enter executive session?
I'll make a motion to enter executive session.
Okay, I have a motion by councilmember Powell. Do I have a second? May I have a second by councilmember Graybeal? Do I have any discussion? All right, all those in favor of entering executive session, please signify by raising your right hand and signify by saying aye. All right, and at this time, I'm going to ask the public to please exit. All right, so we're just coming out of executive session and I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn executive session.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by councilmember Graybeal and a second by councilmember Powell. Do I have any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of adjourning executive session, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that was unanimous. We are out of executive session. There's no action to be taken, so now I have do I have a motion to adjourn the council meeting? Okay, I have a motion by councilmember Powell. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by councilmember Whitaker. Any discussion? All right, no discussion. All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All right, it was unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you.